Council meeting.
Reporting in progress.
I hereby call this council meeting to order. Do we have all the councilmen in attendance? Do we know?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. All councilmen are, all councilors in attendance. And we do have a form, so we can conduct the business. This is April 11th at exactly 7:00 PM. The letter of record also show that we have Town Clerk Gray, our bill and clerk Newen Schwaner, and I'd also like to recognize the chairman of our finance board, Chairman Senkron. Is that his phone? Could you, everyone, please scan for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of America, which stands as one nation, unanimous and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the business, in a business, is to reconvene from our workshop today. So could I get a motion to reconvene? To reconvene. Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved to second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the business is to adopt the agenda. But before we adopt the agenda, is there anything from the consent agenda that the town council would like to move forward? Hearing, hearing none, could I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as written.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved to second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Next item is to adopt the consent agenda.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved to second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries. So we'll go to our regular agenda. And the first item on the agenda is ordinance 2023-03. This is the third reading, I believe.
Yes.
And Councilman Ellis.
Ordinance 2023-01, Title III Administration, Chapter 33, Town Organizations. This is the third reading of the ordinance. There were no changes from the last reading. Basically makes the building inspector an executive member of the planning and zoning board. I move the Town of Star Valley Ranch to approve the third reading of ordinance 2023-01, Title III Administration, Chapter 33, Town Organizations, as written.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved to second again. Does anyone in the audience have any questions about this ordinance change? Council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a change to our, little tiny change to our animal ordinance. This is ordinance 2023-02. And I will explain that. There are no changes. We actually had to, under definitions, define what a leash is. So that's what this does. This is the third reading. So, Councilman?
I can move to the Town of Star Valley Ranch to approve the third reading of the ordinance 2023-02, Title IV Town regulations, Chapter 92, Animals, as written.
Second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Any questions from the audience? Okay. Council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2023-03. And that is, Councilman Ellis?
Ordinance 2023-03, Title VII Traffic Code. It hasn't been changed since the second reading, but the explanation is just to clarify the wording regarding snow removal on town roads and the obstruction of biohydrids with snow. I move the Town of Star Valley Ranch to approve the third reading of the ordinance 2023-03, Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 72, Snow Removal, as written.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved to second. Any questions from the audience on this?
I'd like to speak, please.
If you're speaking on this specifically? If, sir, sir, we have an entire 45 minutes for you to speak at the end.
I want to speak right now.
Well, you're not going to speak right now.
Why not?
Because.
This is what we're talking about. I got a lot of things to say about snow removal.
That's not what this ordinance is about. It's about silent snow, non-hyperventilating.
That law is ambiguous, and I have a lot of things to say about it right here.
Are you signed up to speak?
What the, what do you mean I'm signed up? I live here.
Well, I'm sorry. But we have 2,000 people that live here, and we have to have some kind of rules in our council meetings.
I've had a lot of complaint about snow removal.
Sir, can you please wait and speak?
We have a lot of things to talk about, America.
And that's fine. But can you please?
It seems that there's a merit to let them be snow here.
There's a whole 45 minutes on citizen participation. You are more than welcome to speak then.
This law is ambiguous, all right? And you should go back to your own website and look at priorities, look at stormwater, still drought issues. You're the council that lays on for planning zoning, aren't you?
Sir, sir, we're giving you plenty of time to speak, but this is not the time. Well, they may all be here.
No, they're not. They're going to leave.
Why would they leave?
Because that's not the good stuff. The good stuff's right here.
So it, right, well, as soon as we get to that part on the agenda, we will absolutely let you come up here. That's fantastic. You do that. Okay, back to the ordinance. Any other comments, Council? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2023-04. Councilman Ellis?
Ordinance 2023-04, Land Use, Title 15, Land Use, Chapter 154, Zoning. There have been no changes since the last reading. This basically prohibits signs from being placed on the town live light. I move the Town of Star Valley Ranch to approve the third reading of ordinance 2023-04, Title 15, Land Use, Chapter 154, Zoning, as written.
Second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Any questions from the audience on this? This is a clarification to an existing ordinance. This isn't the one. Okay. Could you please come up and state your name? Okay. Okay.
And I just, I should have said something before, but...
Okay.
What is the, on some of the previous readings, what is the reason for opposing this ordinance? This, this portion of the ordinance? It's signs, signs on the town?
Right. It's not likely to be put signs in the yard for where the only town in the state allows it on our right.
Okay. But because everybody else does it? Do we have such a severe problem? Do we have to put it in, in writing and hold people responsible? Because I haven't seen a lot of responsibility, and I've only lived here 20 years, so... As, as we go through, we have the, the elections, and we have the signs, and, and everything I've seen is, is the candidates are really responsible. They go out and they pick them back up when the election's over, and it still provides an atmosphere, you know, in a forward direction. That's kind of what it's about, to encourage participating. And I'm, I guess, I guess my question is, are, do we have, do we have a solution now in searching for a problem? Because I can't see the, the problem moving. So that's my comment. And it's up to the third reading, and I understand that. But I think as a, as a council, and as a town government, we need to be a little bit careful and not over-regulate everything. And again, make a, put together a, a solution and then go and search for the problem. So that's, that's my comments, and here we go.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want to address that?
No. Last, the last lecture, we actually had signs popping up around town. Ask me if the SMO was taking the signs down. So there was resistance from the community.
Say that again, favor.
Last lecture, we actually had signs being put up by other people. Ask me where the SMO was, why it wasn't taking the signs down.
Can I?
Yes.
Ask another question about what I'm on there?
Sure.
Again, I'm in trouble. So you've got that all down. Wouldn't the candidates be responsible, okay, for removing those signs? Not the SMO. And if it's a problem, then maybe there ought to be a call to the candidate and say, get out there and get your signs out there.
The signs were posted during the election, run up to the election period.
Right up to the election period. I understand that.
No. The signs asking where the SMO was appear two to three weeks prior to the election.
It's not the SMO's problem?
No, no. But I think, I think that there's a miscommunication here. We had people, I don't know who, they posted signs all over town saying, "SMO, why are you getting rid of the signs?" I can't remember exactly what they said. But it, it's been a challenge this year, and right, it was a contentious election, we all know that. And we had more signs than we've ever seen. But, and this kind of started when I went, I was in the legislature in Cheyenne. And our representative said, "I don't understand why your town is such a mess, and you have signs everywhere, and no one else allows it." And so when I came back, I, we talked, the council talked about it. And the interesting thing is, in our ordinance, it has an exception for political signs on public property.
Yes.
So what's the difference if, if I put it in the road right away or if I put it on private property? It's still very visible on private property.
Yes, it is. But the difference is, you need permission from the property owner.
There you go. You have to go to the property owner and talk to them.
That's, that's correct. Okay. And on public land, it seems to me that it's perfectly valid for sign, public signs, you know, regarding that. I don't know about the SMO model. I never saw one for the SMO.
Different problem, yeah.
But anyway, again, are we dividing the solution? You know, and now we've got to go find a problem. You have seen the problem differently than I've seen, because I haven't seen any of this. I've seen the candidates come back after the election and pick up their signs and get them out there, and, and which is absolutely wrong.
But the local candidates do, but the other ones do not.
Then, then you call, then I would think we give the, the state eight, the state eight.
We have.
Yeah. And say, get up here, get cleaned up.
Anyway, we're, it's not in search of a problem. But as always, Ron, I, I respect you and your opinion.
Mayor? I just wanted to add, as a new town person, my understanding now is that also within the current ordinance, there is a requirement that you're not supposed to post signs earlier than 30 days before the event. I know in the past, the letting cycle, we had signs coming out, and I was thinking, you're going to do right after public law. So this was just an attempt, I think, to clarify what's currently in the land use ordinance, and making sure the signs stay out of the right of way, also making sure that towns don't get overwhelmed with little, little signs for six months at a time. Essentially, that's my understanding. Please write in the email. I'm off.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. All of you say aye?
Aye.
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 Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2023-04.
This is the second, second reading of ordinance 2023-05, Title 15, Land Use, Chapter 150, Buildings. There has been one slight change to it. Previously said would require fire suppression on building areas of 5,000 square feet or larger. Now says 5,000 square feet or larger on the main living floor. That's been the only change, is to clarify on the main living floor. I move the Town of Star Valley Ranch to approve the second reading of ordinance 2023-05, Title 15, Land Use, Chapter 115, Buildings, as written.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved to second. Any questions from the audience on this? This is, uh, Council?
Quick question.
Oh, you do.
Building for this is a...
Did, could you, could you state, hold on. Could you please state your name, sir, for the record? We're on Zoom, we're on YouTube, so, just so people know who you are. And you can just scan there, I'm fine with that.
No, no, no.
You're kidding?
I can do it.
Okay.
I'm not very good at that.
Thank you.
My name is John Rock Daniel, and I'm under the 46th Senate Circle, and we certainly don't qualify for 5,000 square feet on the road. But I'm just curious, how many existing buildings were this is a?
So this is specific to residential. And it's, basically what it is is, so we're now consistent with the IRC. We adopted the IRC as a town, International Residential Code.
You're, you're getting way too technical.
Yeah, yeah, so... We have zero right now. Which is, we're okay with that. So, all right. Sorry about that. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Did we do it? We did. All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is, this is ordinance 2023-03. This is under new business. This is the first reading of our appropriations for fiscal year 2023-24. And Town Clerk Gray, you get to introduce this.
Do you want me to read the whole thing or just go with the numbers?
If you would go with the numbers. I do, but, hold on, let me look at it. Nope, you probably should read the whole thing. Okay.
Be it ordained by the governing body of the Town of Star Valley Ranch, Wyoming, appropriations for fiscal year 2023 to 2024. An ordinance providing operating and capital budgets for the Town of Star Valley Ranch for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 32, 2024. Whereas, the Town Treasurer has prepared and submitted to the council the following budgets for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. General Fund Operating Budget, General Fund Capital Improvement Budget, Water Fund Operating Budget, Water Fund Capital Improvement Budget. Whereas, such a fund was duly entered, such a budget was duly entered at large upon the records of this council, and a copy thereof is available for public inspection at the town hall. And whereas, the budget was recited during the town council meeting, at which time all interested parties are given the opportunity to be heard. And whereas, following such public recitations, certain alterations and revisions will be made in such proposed budget, all of which will fully appear in the minutes of the council. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the town council, that the town budget, as so revised and altered, be adopted as the official town budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. Be it further ordained that the following appropriations, as provided for in ordinance number 2023-06, be made for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, and that the expenditures of each officer, department, or spending agency be limited to the amount herein appropriated. And these are the numbers for the general fund. We're anticipating local revenue, the fifth penny of 610,000, property taxes at the 8th note of 425,000, licenses, permits, interest, and miscellaneous of 129,335, sale and use tax of 640,000, direct distribution of 300,000, motor vehicle tax of 51,600, gas and special fuel tax of 18,720, mineral royalties and severance of 208,000, and Wyoming lottery of 9,433, for a total revenue of $2,392,888. And expenses, general administration of 255,876, public safety and SMO of 361,516, road operation expenses of 592,104, wages of road operations of 406,881, attorney, court, and board of 177,897, executive overhead of 35,293, and a contribution to capital reserves of 552,520, for a total of $2,392,888. And then on the general fund capital improvement budget, we have contributions from the general fund of 562,520, road improvement reserve of 973,610. Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one here. Road rehabilitation reserve of 973,610, and town facilities of 55,610, for a total of 1,029,220, for a total source of funds of 1,591,740. And then the use of funds, the road rehabilitation reserve of 973,610, town facilities of 55,610, and reserve for future improvements of 562,520, for a total of 1,591,740, capital. And then the water fund, we have base fees with meter counts of 914,150, the service availability fees of 269,568, water usage fees of 220,000, and late payment penalties of 100,000, water service connection fees of 75,000, and miscellaneous and interest revenues of $94,100, for total revenues of $1,672,828. And then operating expenses, water administration of 99,800, water operations and service agreements of 322,146, water salary and wages of 428,847, loan payments of 669,684, and a contribution to capital reserves of 152,752, for total expenses of $1,672,828. And then the capital use of funds, source of funds, we have the Water Improvement Project 2021 loan of $1,458,208, and then the grant of 723,147. And then for the Water Improvement Project 2022, we have the ARPA portion of it of 287,484, the ARPA grant of $1,399,024, and use of system reserves for 499,467, for total water projects of 3 million... I'm looking at the wrong one. 4,377,330, contribution from water operations of 152,752, and application of reserves for the system reserve of 197,390, and a total of application reserves of 197,390. For a total source of funds being 4,727,472. And then capital use of funds, the Greek Canyon Tank lining of 197,390, Water Improvement Project 21 of $2,191,255, Water Improvement Project 2022 of $2,185,975, total projects of 4,547,330, and contribution to reserves of 152,752, for total use of funds of 4,727,472.
I move the Town of Star Valley Ranch to approve the first reading of the ordinance 2023-06, appropriations for fiscal year, or 2023, 2024, as written.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. So I'm sure we have questions, so I'm going to open this up. This is our fiscal year budget that will start in July, so that we're doing right now. Do I have any questions from the audience on the budget?
Yes.
You want to come up here and state your name, please?
My name is Larry Robinson. I live at 298 West Elkhorn Drive. I've been here for 16 years. That's my trademark here. Oh, oh. So I'm leading all the line items, and you know accounting. And I didn't see one inch of snow removal. What category does that fall into?
That falls under the road operations expenses.
Can you go back to that, please? Which one is it?
It's road operation expenses of 592,104.
What other functions does that cover besides snow removal?
Road maintenance, fuel, equipment maintenance.
Do we really believe that's enough to do snow removal at Star Valley?
These numbers are based off of previous year's budget.
Yeah, I saw what happened this year, because it's based on previous numbers. That's insufficient for snow removal. We'll talk about that in the workshop.
I can, let me say one thing on that, Larry. One of the things that came up in our workshop today that Councilman Denny recommended is that we had, set aside a half a million dollars for an emergency fund, so we actually have money to call in extra help if we need it.
Yeah.
Which we thought, I think everyone thought that that was a good suggestion, but...
But that number needs to change. We need to double that, actually.
Okay. Well, thank you. Any other questions on this, Coach? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries on the first reading. So this is our resolution 23-04-11-001. And Councilman Brock, you want to explain this and read it?
Certainly.
Thank you.
See, everyone can hear me all right? This is the regulation number 23 over 11,001. It's related, regulating 1916 to establish these properties, the fact that the memory service of good records requests return check fees to the Town of Star Valley Ranch, Wyoming. I will point out that the only real change to this resolution is the addition of a return check fee. So I will go ahead and run through this real quick, but just so everyone knows, that is what the substantial change to this resolution is. Section 1, copies, letter one sided, 17, black and white, 35 cents color, two sided, 20 cents, black and white, 40 cents color, legal one sided, 27, black and white, 40 cents color, legal two sided, 25 cents, black and white, 45 cents color, 11 by 7, one sided, 45 cents, 45 cents color, two sided, 30 cents, black and white, 40 cents color, section 2, the maximum access is a 10% over fee for merchandising of $50, additional pay is 25 cents each, section 3, other services, free for town residents, $5 for house town residents, section 4, public records, free website information, and then it's $150 per hour for refunds in three years, $300 per hour for refunds for 3 years old, professional fees will be charged as a contractual rate, that is attorney, CPA, or engineer, section 5, return check fee of $35 on non-perishable fees provided for work areas shall be effective as of the date of passage of the regulation of the governing body of the Town of Star Valley Ranch, as of the 11th day of April, 2023. I move the Town of Star Valley Ranch to approve the resolution 23-04, 11-001, fee as written.
Second? Second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Any, uh, questions on this? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, mush and carries. Um, next item on the agenda is a proclamation of gratitude. This is for, um, Boyd Sidaway, who is, um, has been the chairman of our water ward uh, for the past two years. Obviously, he's been involved with the town for many, many years. Um, but he has resigned from that position, so, um, Councilman Denny, would you please read that?
Yes, we can begin to get a little more, like, to keep you. How long have I been in Wyoming? Do you hear that?
Yep.
Proclamation of the head of the board, Jay Boyd Sidaway. Whereas the town of Wyoming, two wishes of the knowledge of the area is Jay Boyd Sidaway is not standing in any case of service in the town of Star Valley Ranch. As the system remains within the hours of all the services, as a servant of the water used to the water. Whereas the town of Star Valley Ranch is benefited by the background of knowledge, experience, motivation, and his dedication to the community, which is his duty. If the town of Wyoming is, for officials and higher government, are going into the system and improve the conventional, still mainly, water facilities. Whereas this system, where my town is free and editing, my town is also, along with the leadership of my community, is moving to use the system. Whereas the town is benefited by Jay Boyd Sidaway, who always provides support and advice to the local regulations and the improvement maintains the system for multiple reasons for that I need to hear at every level. Whereas the town is allowed to, for more than eight, ten, and eight, twenty, twenty-one,
For all of us, and there is a property tax relief program for Wyoming home owners. You just need to go to the state's website, to the Department of Revenue, and you can see if you qualify for that. You can also go to the county and see if you can qualify for that, so. I do know there's a special program for veterans, but this one is for everyone who owns homes in Wyoming. You have to have a resi- there's a residency part in there, so. I would say you definitely want to check that out. And then the last thing that I thought was pretty exciting is I was contacted by Silver Star, and they are actually going to start working on fiber up here. So, finally. I may have said that we're the second largest town in the valley, but anyway, so that was pretty exciting news. And as I know more, we'll let you know, because there's a very good chance they'll be digging in front of your house, so. Just want to make sure that everyone is informed as to where they're at and where they're working in town. That was pretty exciting news, and that was, that's really it right now. So, we now have a citizen participation section. There was a signup sheet, so Kristen's going to go get that signup sheet. And we'll get everybody up here. There's, I think, a three-minute time limit, but when you're standing in front of us, it sounds like a long time, so. So, if everybody got this, we do a signup sheet, and there's kind of the rules. We try to keep it in order as much as we can. We've only got two people signed up. So, the first person on the list is Kip Sadi.
Hello, my name is Kip Sadi. I'm a 32-year-old court. I've got some pretty big concerns with San Antonio Rose, Palau, Fire Hydrants. I want to read a quick video that you guys actually have on your website. Okay, so it's 50-05, trash last year interference water to a property. So, skip a, the three-foot radius of either space around Fire Hydrants shall be maintained in such a manner as not to curtail or interfere with the effective use in an emergency. No one other than those authorized by the town shall change or cause change in this area. So, this entire letter and document, pictures, videos, the Fire Hydrants have not been dug out. I just saw them start to dig those out yesterday. So, there's still about 10 feet in the Fire Hydrant that's closest to my house, and 7 feet over the other one down the road. So, again, all letter and document, and the roads. So, I've talked to the March plane. He let me do a call through the road conditions, and they can't even put out a fire hydrant because the hydrant was covered with snow and ice. The chief will not raise his crews or equipment. You have the town's man and board contract, which is on your guys' website. So, there's no help for citizens, and maybe they show the snow and roads, but then the town's, well, there's windows or driveways, which I, 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 I can deal with, you know, moving out, but there's elderly here in the town. I've actually helped, you know, some women, but I don't have every day out there just, you know, helping anybody, anybody that I can. I do what I can, what I can. What about your residents, you know, from town? You know, how about how on call 24/7, because they were not, you guys stayed Friday services and Sundays, and same with the, yeah, same with the plows. And I watched, you know, we had a huge storm one month and a half ago, a foot and a half of snow fell. Starting on Thursday night, I did not see one plow. I pulled little cars out in the middle of the road, put them back in the driveway, I dumped a plow. But I'll tell you what, I did not see a plow until Monday morning. That's wrong. You guys are responsible for those roads. You guys are. And if these firemen can, or vehicles can get into an emergency, you guys will be holding hell. I've talked to the state Fire Marshal, I've talked to the Fire Chiefs, I've gone to law research, talked to attorneys, you know. I'm begging you guys, please do your job. I know we have a lot of snow, but you know what, ask for help. Ask for help, you know, Fang, they do a great job. All their Fire Hydrants look great. Help out. Get some of their boys down here and help out. Subcontract. You know, you got North Star, you know, construction, they do snow, they do a great job. So, J.C., you got Mount Massa Despation, you know, there's.
Time is up, three minutes.
What?
Your time is up, sorry.
I mean, I got other solutions.
We hear you, just to say we hear you.
Well, I hope so.
Let's see.
Mr. Sadi, may I make a comment? If you would like to email me your solutions or your comments, send those over to me. I do it downstairs, right outside the main door on that top floor of that.
Are you the contact?
Yeah, town clerk. And I'll make sure that the county gets those comments.
Uh, Larry? I think you're next.
Sorry, I was a little rash first time, I'm a little heated over this issue. And I apologize.
Thank you.
I'm warning you on news myself, I'm Larry Robinson. I go by lawyers, my friends call me. I live in Platteville. And first thing, I was going to speak for this law, so I wrote my, I don't want to say it's a speech of what I was going to say, based on entering the conversation at that time. Because I wanted to say, I want to go back to that, I was in agreement with that law, but I believe it's rather ambiguous, all right? And it doesn't have any accountability from the town at all, all right? When I saw it somewhere, because this has been a law since 2009, all right? My first review back in 2006, that was the first time I said, "Don't throw your snow in the road." Well, as Lars, as Kip was saying, he had problems with not seeing the snow clouds. And I've been here for 16 years, and I've never ever had to reach out to a town for assistance. I sent a complaint slash request on the website to the town, and I never ever heard a response. And that's unacceptable, all right? And another thing, I'm going to get back to what I'm doing here. I want to get back to this because I have some serious points. And I might warn you for probably three minutes, okay? So, I know this passed, and I'm acknowledging that. But my neighborhood town did not need its responsibility at all. And I've been here for 16 years, and it's seen the service. This was an abomination to the town. And I noticed a lot of things this year in my neighborhood. And I want to share my observation. And it seems that the town, because I'm in the construction industry, I'm a construction superintendent in Teton County, and I know what's a road cost. And I can almost bet that this town ran out of money three months ago, all right? Because there's certain things that happen every year, the snow removal. And right now, the snow mains in my neighborhood are not cut back. They're impeding in the road. I've got the house across the street, and you know which one I'm talking about. Put a rain gutter up there, and it's running down into the street. Now, I'm not picking on that one, but there's a whole bunch of other people in my neighborhood that meet the criteria of throwing snow and having stormwater. So, and I don't pay attention to that. So.
Can we give you? Sorry, we didn't give Kip any more time.
Well, no, no, you've got to give me my time, because I'm not going to come back after this. I shouldn't be here until the removal. All right, this talks about children, and a lot of, so.
Hold tight, I see, Council, are you okay if we give a little bit more time? And then we'll see if Kip wants to come back up.
He'll want to come up after me too, I bet you does. So.
We can do that, since there's only two people, so.
Right, and it's interesting. You live here full-time, correct?
Absolutely.
So, I want to make it clear, last month, I wanted to come to the town council meeting. Guess what? I could not get out of my neighborhood because there's a pot of slush. And I was just like, I was pulling out some friends out of the slush. At a house, I'm not going to say where it was, which you want, because you'll have to figure that out. I'm not that kind of a person. But that's the same place. The next morning, the school bus got stuck. See, I have this school bus that comes in my neighborhood every morning to pick up a couple of children, all right? And everywhere I've been with their snow removal, the first lane is under priority on emergency routes and main road roads and bus routes. Just like Kip said, there's no way the emergency route got rid of it. And it's been that way most of last month. And it was all the way up till the Saturday that we didn't have slush. And then I'm going to bring something else up here, because this really bothers me. I've been living here for 16 years, and I've been blowing snow out of my driveway everywhere, all right? So, it's everybody else living here except this year. Guess why? Because the town is cleaning those people's driveways. You should investigate that. If you want some proof, go drive by neighborhood, and look in every one. And they all have a common interest, all right? And another thing is it's dangerous. I've had it happen to me, especially with the lady across the street, because you can't see. And what I saw was towns snowing with it, helping friends and family and church members. I saw that. Now, how do you police yourself? How does this stop and everybody else gets the same treatment? Because guess what got run out? Me and my other neighborhood. And then one morning, I walked out there, there's the op, the front runner. He's in the perfect position to make a turn to 11:30, and he could have pushed that right in there. But because of that, I spent 30 minutes, no, actually almost an hour, because it was all slush. And then my quarter, because nobody else is getting it, I'm giving it, all right? I had the first time a 10-foot quarter. And then I had to pay somebody for the first time to come move my snow. And that's upon the town. So, what's the town going to do with the snow problem? I mean, that's just running my street. The ladies you gutter is running out of middle of the street. Same with the people down the other end of the street. So, let's get back to stormwater, all right? Where we do a stormwater? How do we get people to contain it? Because that's against the code of IDC, and I don't like it. You can't have stormwater running down the street. And the thing is, my side of the street, the drainage, on the opposite side, were a lot of storms. And because the snow wasn't cut back, there's no drainage, and now I got the river coming down my street. And if you don't want to take the driveway, you get down my road.
Oh, yeah, many, many, many times. I think people are starting to, are you about finished?
Almost.
Okay.
I'm out of here right now. So, I would like to know, let's get down to the budget part. So, why did I run out of money? We ran out of money, that's why we went out of these services. It's okay, it, but what are we going to do for the next year? And why don't we open a budget, and then take the leftover, and put it in and find out?
I think that's kind of what we talked about today.
That's what we need to be done, though. And I need a response from the town when I send in a request. That's unacceptable in private access.
Have you called me? You haven't called me for a long time.
I sent in a request on the website. I knew it was a website. Now, what I'm really concerned about is how I saw certain driveways cleared here in Gilbert. My mind was hooked.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not aware of that, so.
And so, I guess some things I'm trying to reach you about is, is how do I get the stormwater problem taken care of? And proper drainage, and push it. Because there were a lot of accidents this year. And. I spent some time, I was.
I know you did.
I was trying to make sure.
You need to send it in, so at least have a copy of it, so I know what you're concerned about.
So, this is sort of a fine line here. So, should I send you my $400 dollar personal removal?
We're not going to pay that.
So, I don't want to pay that ever again, because I've never been again. I don't want to have that much snow maimed than I've ever been before. So, this year.
It's been a tough year for me. It's been a rough year, there's no doubt about it.
That's okay.
Everybody's kind of old.
The town is unprepared. Okay, that's unacceptable in Wyoming. I watched the town, it's a bunch of program money. And I know they have their own money, but you can't do it, because we all know where it's at. And it sucks to get out of my neighborhood for making dry magic out of that, into the beautiful town there on Money Street. It's perfectly dry and clear. And first time this year, our plan was actually cleared. Took a couple of bus accidents to do that, but it's done. So, what can we expect from the town? There's no real plan.
I can't add.
Should we talk about it next month?
We could certainly talk about it again.
Well, we put it on the agenda and see if the planning town can come up with a plan, because I'll tell you something. I drive a, I drive a 2020 Ram. And I always got stuck on that. And I had my pedal pedal before. I should have been going 50 miles an hour. So.
All right, Kip, would you like to go back?
I'll send you all next month about that.
Thank you. Yeah, we're talking. Kip Sadi, I'm on to, uh, cover work. So, I got some solutions, but there's also just, you know, things to. So, those that you heard, right? On my, so what's the solutions that you guys come up with for, say, in the future, even today, if you still have fire hydrants, still have 2 feet, 10 feet of snow, you know, covered up, snow and ice?
So, they're working on it, they're trying to get it done. And that was their priority right now, other than dealing with some of the slush in different parts of town. Different, we have different, so we were shorthanded to three people, which didn't make winter great. We've hired two, we're still trying to hire one more, and that's made it the ability for us to get all those hydrants cleaned out.
Some contractors, lots of guys, you know, that have businesses and heavy equipment, they can know how. I know, I know people in your own house. I guess, so I guess I want to let you know why. So, I was really upset that coming down about three weeks ago. My fiance now, we were heading out, and I was actually taking her up to the old refuge, you know, going outside to propose to her. Coming down this road and going to Money Street. I was only going 6 miles an hour. And I started slowing down, going a long way away, black ice, and I knew I was in trouble. Second, I didn't even try to touch brakes, and I was just sliding. We came in just from hitting a propane tank, that tanker, you know, a guy that was going to come up. The only reason why we didn't, you couldn't have been in between my vehicle and where he was, where the spout was. And I was furious, and I posted some stuff on Facebook, my part. But, so, I'm pissed, you know, but I want people accountable, you know. So, if there is, you know, people that get hurt or lose their whole children lives because of the negligence, you know, then I'm definitely will be the retailer, you know, and go for it. And you guys, I, I'm just, I don't want to do that, I don't have the time. I've got other things that I want to do in life, you know, but, so. Here's a few solutions. Actually, oh, yeah, so I did say that, you know, with snowplow, there needs to be 24/7 out, you know, on call, on snowplows. That hasn't, every town has, every town has.
Sir.
You get four inches.
I just want to say something, and I was trying not to do this, but first of all, they plow all weekend. They are on call 24 hours. There is a gentleman in this audience that lives on Alta. He is out in the roads in the middle of the night, checking the roads. And I'm sorry, but you're not on all 35 miles of road every minute.
No, no.
Okay. But don't say that and say that they're not, because they are.
Not why.
Well, then, I'm sorry, but I know that they're out, so.
All right, I'm, I'm, just, we'll agree this way, but they're not. So, there needs to be more people out there.
Absolutely, we know we need more people.
Um, how do you feel about that one anyway, this year? With the snow removal and the high highs on the city?
I think they struggle to get everything done, but we also had substantially more snow than we usually have. And I think Lars is correct, that we need to have some money set aside to deal with these type of situations.
Absolutely.
I would agree. But they were working many hours.
So, solutions that, that I was just going to try to come up with. So, one thing is, I've never heard you cry out for citizens or anybody else. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe you're talking about, but I've never saw, you know, a flag, you know, being raised up to say, hey, you know, come help us, help us shovel the fire hydrants or something, you know, because there's guys out there, like me, that can come in and get you, you know, flowers, you know, amount of that or whatever. But there's power numbers, and there's numbers, so we can probably get stuff taken care of. What if you guys, you know, if you're in a situation like this? If you feed some guys some burgers and hot dogs and some lousy potato chips, do you know how many guys are going to come out and be down the door to just help out? You know, it's simple things like that, but that's a possibility. You know, that's going to cost you a few hundred dollars versus a few thousand dollars. So, just an idea. Some project, you know, you know, to, you know, to overcome problems. Like, yeah, so pick a weekend day. Um, maybe, here's the idea, do you guys have a Facebook page?
Yes.
Yeah, I haven't, so, um, okay.
How many do we have? $800 or something like that? Everybody don't know. So, yes, we do have this.
Okay, that's good to know, I did not know about that. Have, have you asked the governor for extra help this winter? Have you asked the governor for extra help or anything, like put a plow out or some more VIPs or anything?
That's, that's not how it works.
Well, I mean, mayor area, you can contact the governor and say, we're, we're, we're in need of help here. I've seen.
If I, well, you can ask for federal help if you declare an emergency, but there's very specific guidelines on what an urgency is. So, that would be through FEMA, but it's not, it's, trust me, I've been asking for help for 11 years for the town, and it's not that easy to get it, so.
Yeah, I'm not a politician, so.
I can do it for water.
What's that?
I can give money for water, it's just not anything else. So, yeah.
Here's the idea, so after the guys plowed, you guys had some sanding truck out. You know, sand, you know, you know what some sands are. And going on the, that has to be sanding, guys, it has to be sanding both ways, you know, on the stream and also on the Star Valley Ranch. You know, because, you know, like I said, we came in just with a propane tanker, okay? That could have ended our lives, you know, so that pretty much was pretty upsetting, but stick some, some of those old barrels, like back in the day, I mean, I'm 50 years old. But we used to put gravel, you know, barrels full of, you know, gravel and a shovel. I'd be happy to jump out and throw some sand, you know, some, you know, some help down there, you know, to help stop.
You know, it's interesting, because we tried that, and no one ever used it. So, but we can try it again.
I mean, I was.
Yeah, it was pretty interesting, but nobody used it.
So, here's the thing, though, but if they use it, then they don't have a right to complain. Because if you guys are, if you guys have.
I meant to remember that.
Well, I mean, seriously, but if you guys, you know, do something to where people can help themselves, and they don't, they're like, we got the sand out there, I mean, why didn't you know something? That's how they come back.
We'll put that back on our list.
Exactly. You know, and it's cheap, you know, like at the Saddle Loop, the Vista, I don't know, Vista Loop or whatever it is.
Yeah, Vista East West.
I drove that like last weekend or whatever. Horrible, absolutely horrible, you know, but, but have some barrels, you know, you know, I don't know, what the distance is, you know. Talk to the Y-Dog, see what they suggest. But anyway, put some gravel and barrels in a shovel or something.
Do you have a shovel? See what happens?
Yep, so. There's a grant, so you guys, you guys ready to get grants? Anybody applying by?
For what specifically?
Let's say like a snowblower. You guys got to use a really nice snowblower, like on a front end ladder, you know.
Well, we have one, and it broke, and it was seven months out, eight months out to get the parts. July. July. We will have it back in July. That's our rolling room right now.
All right, I did know that, you know, but, you know, a grant, trying to get a, you know, new one. You know, they're expensive, I don't know, but just an idea. And then I guess last thing is, involves, you know, let us help, because it all falls, you know, on us. The majority is on us, but it's also on us too. And there's a lot of us that will jump in and help out.
I appreciate that.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, Council, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Upcoming.
Oh, upcoming, sorry. It's one of those things. Uh, huh? Oh, Zach, do you want to come here?
Yes, sir.
Please.
My name is Zach, I'm a real, I'm a real, and I want to say hello to my country resident. I work all the time. I plowed about 50 times a year. Don't tell me I'm not a brother. I have, and third way, Saturday night, Friday, Saturday, I'll be a member. I plowed, I was a brother.
I didn't say anything, but I saw you.
Yeah, well, don't, don't, I mean, we keep it, we have it. Or we can, okay, I, I want to say that, I'm hearing it so much. Let's get him, let's get this, let's get that. The lower giving for a contract, coming here and plowing is $430,000. Do you think that's a fair amount of brothers? If I plowed, I'm going to fix it.